Good evening, at seven o'clock, let's call the meeting to order. Sarah, would you call the roll, please? Here? Here?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, do we, uh, do we agree with the agenda and do we have a, uh, motion to approve the agenda? Support. Okay, voiced vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, same thing for the minutes from June the eighth, I've reviewed them, I think they look okay. I think they look very well done, this is a very good set of minutes, thank you, Sarah.
I, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We now move to public comments, can be about anything, we will have time for public comments during the new business item that we're reviewing. Do we have any public comments? No one in the audience, no one online? Okay, we'll close. Sarah? Nothing? Okay, we'll close the public comments. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we will call the public hearing to order. New business is a request for a variance for three twenty-one Water Street for a fence height. What we'll do for this is, we've just called this public meeting to order. We'll have a summary by the zoning administrator. We'll have a presentation by the applicant. And then we'll have public comment regarding this application and this application only. We'll ask people to identify themselves and we'll limit comments to, uh, three minutes. Supporting comments first, opposing, and then general comments. And after that, we will close the public hearing. Okay, uh, could we have a summary by the zoning administrator, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, uh, good evening, and, uh, before you this evening is a, uh, request from the applicant, Brad Northman. A request for a dimensional variance to request, uh, to construct a fence, uh, at three twenty-one Water Street. The fence, uh, at its peak, essentially would be six foot ten inches instead of the maximum six foot fence height, which was an increase of ten inches. So they're requesting a variance for that, that ten inches. It's properties, uh, actually located in the Water Street, uh, East District, and so it's actually surrounded by, um, kind of a, a variety of, uh, commercial businesses and mixed-use buildings. Some of the, uh, surrounding properties, because they are commercial in nature, actually do have higher fencing. Properties that are subject to formal site plan review by the planning commission can actually, uh, ask for higher fencing than six foot. Uh, in this case, they're, um, a single-family dwelling, residential use, um, they're not subject to a formal site plan review by the planning commission, so they're limited to, um, six feet. So, uh, I believe the applicant, uh, yep, is here this evening and, uh, is, uh, prepared to present their application to you.
Thank you. Uh, presentation by the applicant, please.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Marilyn LaGloria, and I'm the owner of the property at three twenty-one Water Street. And as, um, Ryan mentioned, um, I'm asking to increase my fencing ten inches, um, at the height, the peak of it. Um, I think you have the application and maybe the images?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And I am surrounded by mainly commercial properties. I've got the boardwalk next to me on one side, and then on the other side, and behind me is a vacation rental. So, um, it would provide me with a little bit additional privacy, um, in addition to just improving the overall look of my property. So what I'm really trying to do is, oh, yeah. Oh, thank you, um, I'm trying to capture the look of my, um, fencing of my gate, of my driveway. And just kind of recreate that look as for my fencing around the backyard of my property. This is kind of the look I wanted, and do you have the image of my driveway or my gate? Yeah. Yes, that's my gate, so this is the look I'd like to be able to complete around the back of my property. Just replicate what's there. So, do you have any questions for me, or?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Number one, thank you for coming today. Um, the material for your fence, your picture shows wood, is that your intent?
Yes, all wood.
Okay, now, uh, question for Ryan. Technically, the fencing standard requires that the best appearance side of a fence face outward, not inward. In her situation, she already has the surrounding property's fence there, because she's building inside of their fence. So is it acceptable for her to have the finished side of the fence on her side of the property? Given that the neighbors have already obstructed the view of the back of the fence?
Right, so essentially, still, the better side of the fencing and that is going on her property would still have to face the neighbors, because at some point, the neighbor's fence could go away, it could change. There is a provision that says that both properties can have a fence, and then they have to work out an agreement on who's gonna, you know, and maintaining the, the, the space in between, but she still would have to, the structural support of her fence would still have to be, um, facing her as she's looking out, and then the decorative side of the fence would have to face out towards the neighbors.
Either that, or the structure could be, the, the fence could go into the structure, and you'd see the structure from both sides, the, the supports. Like, like is done at, at a wall on the other side of the river there. Just a minute, would, would you identify yourself, please, sir?
Yes, I'm Ted DeGraff.
Okay.
And I'm with Lighthouse Realty, I also own a property at four oh three Water Street, which is hundred and fifty feet from her property that I own, it's a commercial building. I just want to let you know that her whole property is already currently fenced.
Yes.
All, all the way around.
Yes.
And you, and you can see that this is, uh, the mitten brewery.
Yes.
And behind her is a vacation round. To the southeast of her, the Wally's and the other buildings. So, everyone already has a current fence that is, uh, attractive to their properties. So what she's proposing is, uh, new fence between all the current fencing, just facing her property.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to verify that it's all fenced.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, but that, that concept violates the standard. For a fence. So that's...
I'm not sure I understand. Yeah. So, are you asking me a question?
The, the only thing we're talking about is, on which side of your fence are the support posts?
Just, um, go ahead, Brad, he's my, this Brad is my, gonna be building, my builder.
Hi, I'm Brad Northman, I'm the builder that will do the work for this, for Marilyn. Um, the fence is, we're not constructing a new fence, the support posts are already there. But when the fence was put in originally, both sides of the fence were finished. So the, all the structure is hidden from all sides, from all angles, from any residence or business. So both sides of the fence are already finished today. What we're proposing is to just replace the boards that are weathered and worn on the inside of fence with new material. And with the exception that in the middle of those sections, they're six foot ten inches, which would match that fence gate. That gate is six foot ten inches now. So we're just trying to match the architecture and art of what exists today with new boards.
So you're not doing any new support material?
No.
I've, I've been here before, working with the historic commission when I was doing renovations on my place. And this fencing here is what was actually originally there, so it, size-wise and height and everything else, so, um, which I had approval for, for the gate. So all I'm wanting to do right now is just finish that off on one side, so it's really replacing the boards, not the support beams, because they're already present.
Are you gonna do it on one side or three sides?
All the way, so all three.
All three at one side.
Keep going.
This is kind of...
Okay, back up, please, Sarah.
Their fencing, their fencing is already even above mine, these are the properties around me.
Yep.
So they already have more height than, than I have on my side.
So this is, this is a fence with two finished sides?
Yeah.
Yes, all, all three sides are that way, and each side is a little bit different in how they're finished. And you can see on this one, that whoever finished the, the backside, this is Marilyn's side right here?
Yes.
The backside of this fence is supported, but it's put above the finished surface of her fence. I don't know if they would both put it at the same time, or who knows, but it's a little odd. But we're, we're gonna try to clean that up, just make it look nice.
It doesn't look that great, right?
We can, we can, we, we all came and looked at it.
I, I, I looked at it, I wasn't exactly, you know, it, it's a little complicated. The, i- i- can I, is this appropriate to ask questions at this time, or should we?
If there's...
Fair it that out later?
If there's something we need to clarify?
Well, they, on, in this particular picture, for instance, the, uh, the, the builder, please, uh, on this particular picture, you've got the kind of a picket fence, and then you've got this fence beyond it, and, uh, that's higher. Now, whose fence is that, is that your fence, is it a fence for this property, or it, is that the church's, uh, fence?
Marilyn, did you put, did you install both sides of that fence?
Yeah, I did. This back here, that, that's church's.
Right.
Did you install that?
No.
They put that on the support that you provided?
Yeah, I don't know when that was installed.
The support?
This is mine right here.
It, and it looks like it makes, makes a right angle here, but it, i- in another picture, it almost looks like the supports for this, for the current fence are on the other side, uh, you know, on the neighbor's side. But I'm not...
It's offensive. Their side is finished, and so is hers, so the...
So, you notice the shadow right here, it's kind of clear right there?
Yeah.
There's a support beam attached to the upright, four by four, and on this side, and then there's one on the backside that supports these...
That other fence, the other fence.
But there's support beams on both sides of the support posts, and then finished fencing on, on both sides. And it's that way on all three sides.
So clarify, there, there's separate supports for each of the respective fences, okay?
Well, I'd ask the, the zoning administrator to, I mean, uh, to, you know, kind of evaluate that, I mean, uh, you know, if, if that works, then fine, but, uh, I mean, that's, i- i- my first impression was that if it's normally what we see in a fence is, you would not see the inward portion looking like that, you would see the support structure. That's what you would normally see.
From inside the, yeah, from in, on their property.
That side.
Correct.
So, that's what you would normally see, but in this case, it's, we're, it, the, the structure is on the neighbor's side.
Well, it is currently, I mean, they're, they're obviously looking to take off what's existing, and perhaps what, when that fence was installed, maybe that wasn't a provision in the zoning ordinance, maybe it's not conforming, but if they're going to install something...
It's a bit of an, you're, yeah, it's a non-conforming situation.
But, uh, it's, it would be conforming because it was allowed at the time. Because the planning commission can allow fences higher than six feet.
Right, but I think what...
We're, we're only talking about the support structure, uh, i- i- inward or outward?
And, and Mr. Chair, if I could, I'll clarify that, please, what I'm indicating is that the current zoning ordinance states that the decorative side of the fence, the one that reveals to the least extent the support members of the fence shall be located so that it is facing toward the adjacent properties and toward the street on a corner lot. So, when that current fence was installed, clearly right now, the decorative side of the fence is, you know, towards the property owner's backyard. And I don't know how long this provision has been in the zoning ordinance, so, but with, with the, the structural pieces not, um, with the decorative side of the fence not facing the adjacent properties, I mean, there's a non-conformity there, I think.
Well, can I ask you for a little clarification on that? The way I see this fence is the decorative side of the fence is facing the other yard. There's also decorative on the inside of the fence, and I believe the ordinance allows for that. You don't have to have your structure exposed, you can cover the structure on your side of the fence, as long as there's a decorative side that covers the structure outward, that faces outward.
Would that not require two parallel sets of boards?
I don't think it does, I, I've read the ordinance, it's, it doesn't specify.
How does it get covered up, how does it get covered up on the neighbor's side? How does the structural support get covered up on the neighbor's side?
Just what you see here, Rich, the neighbor has covered it. Those, those square top... The neighbor tonight.
I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, I'm telling you though, that, that the ordinance only allows you to place the fence on your property, and I mean, the way the regulation reads is that the decorative side of the fence, the one that, to the, one that reveals to the least extent, the support members of the fence have to be located towards the adjacent properties.
More structure on the out, on the outside.
Right, but I, I don't...
There's no structure revealed, in, in any case, on the outside.
Yeah, you're sitting at the mitten, you see the same fencing that I have on my side, close by, but you do not see the support beams.
Correct, because they, because you both have fences, but say the other fence wasn't there, I wouldn't, I wouldn't evaluate that provision based on whether or not there's another fence there that might be blocking the, the structural supports, I don't think that would be a fair read, I have to look at it simply, what you're putting on your property and what's, whether something's blocking the structural supports or not from the neighbor, I, I, I wouldn't evaluate that way.
We, there's many examples in the city of fencing with decorative side on both sides. You, you just finished one at, um, the cottage. Eight-foot fence, has the same decoration on both sides, completely covers the structure, the same manner on both sides.
But you're not installing it on both sides, sir?
Right, right, but it's already installed, we're just, we're not even installing, I, the word install, we're repli, we're repairing a weathered fence, we're putting new boards on a weathered fence that already exists with decorative on both sides. So why, why are we even, why is it even an issue to consider? We're just replacing worn materials. Would we rather just leave the worn materials in place? Does, does that help Marilyn, or the city, or the neighbors, or anyone?
Well, I, I, I'm gonna defer to the chair, I'm not, I guess, gonna, I don't think it's proper for me to debate that issue here, if, I mean, that's my view at this point on, on how that provision reads, um, you could choose to request a variance from that provision, um, but that's how I've applied it since I've been with the city, so...
I didn't, I understand what you're saying.
I hadn't run across the one that's decorative on both sides. I would think that would apply if you've got something that's decorative on one side.
If, if, and I, I, I guess I don't want us to get stuck on this, but how is this decorative on both sides? On the, here, the support, the support has to be somewhere. There's only, there's one side that the support is on.
No, the support, you can have fence on both sides of it.
But, I mean, i- i- do they own the fence on both sides, is that part and parcel of the same fence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, I, I mean, I'm led to believe that the fence that's covering it up is of the, the neighbor's fence. But you're saying, well then, I guess we would see a plan of this. I- is this just boards and then the support, or is this two sets of boards? I'm trying to figure out, I was supposed to say in this, but what covers up these posts on the other side? Does something cover up these posts on the other side?
Yes.
Why?
You're looking at, at two fences.
You're looking at, at exterior photo of a neighbor's.
This is Marilyn's side of the fence today.
Right, and, and here's the structure, it's on, is on the neigh, is on the opposite side.
It's on the backside of this, but it's on, also on the backside of this fence.
Backside of this fence, it...
It's in sandal shim between the, the two.
Okay, if this fence, and this is the neighbor's fence, or is this her fence?
That's right behind...
Is, this is the neighbor, the neighbor's?
That's, that's, uh, Wally's is right there, and then...
So the, the neighbor, this is the, the neighbor's fence, the neighbor controls this fence. And so, you, I, I mean, I'm just, and so you're right, it's, it's the, the, the structure is set, is, is covered up by the neighbor's fence. And you're right, it's covered up by a fence, but it's not her fence. In order to have a fence that covered up the structural support, you'd have to have another set of these, probably on the other side, a dual set. And that way, when you looked at it, you would see nothing, but you wouldn't see any structure. And I think that's what you've been maintaining, is that this is decorative on both sides. Well, uh, it's only decorative on both sides because of the neighbor's fence. How far is this fence from this fence? And is it some little distance, or?
It's about ten inches higher than this.
How far is this fence from this?
It's, it's the width, it's about that width, so you have a four by four, and you have two structural members on each, and then you have the finished fence of both sides. And I believe that Marilyn installed all that fencing, her boat builder put both sides of the fencing on originally, on all three sides.
So there's, and there's fencing on both sides.
And you feel like these supports, uh, in, uh, they, they're not rotted at all?
I've inspected them, they're, they're good.
Thank you.
Can I speak a minute, on behalf of Marilyn, or do you want a question, or is it public comment now?
No, we'll save it for public comment, please.
I'm not sure, you know, anyways, I've asked some questions, and we'll just put that in the hopper, and I'm...
So, it would, to me, it would seem that the neighbor is satisfied with the fence on their side of the property. Both sides are decorative, so as long as you're not exposing structure to the neighbors, you're not making the situation any worse.
You're not making the situation any worse.
Yeah, you're, you're not, you're not exposing the neighbors to structure that they're not looking at, that, to anything they're not looking at, no, the neighbor's view stays exactly the same on all three sides.
Partially because those fences are higher.
Yeah, and that's, yes, and she wants her fence to match that, but not be taller than that, is that correct, Marilyn? Will your fence be taller than the neighbor's fence?
When you go and if you do the arch, it'll probably be comparable in height to this.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So, I'm thinking it's probably cool, gonna be very close to that, in the middle part.
Yeah.
The sides will be the six feet.
Sure.
The arches, the ten inches, I guess, yeah.
Then we're all gonna remove the, um, post cap.
That's right.
Okay.
Here's a, uh, if, if, if this is used as a, as a residence, this property is used as a residence?
That's my full plan.
Right, I mean, I've always, I've seen that, I've, born and raised here, I've seen that place.
It was a commercial, and then...
Yeah, for times.
And it's my real estate.
Okay, and so you live there, and you, so you tried to enjoy the backyard, whereas the other ones are commercial.
This... Okay. Okay, um, we're still on the presentation by the applicant part, Marilyn, have you finished? We're, we're, we're heading towards public comments.
Okay, I'm speaking out of here, Marilyn, here. I've been in town for thirty-five years, and I own a property hundred and fifty feet away from her. I don't know if you know the mitten brewery there? I sold that property, uh, twice, I also sold Marilyn her home. And Marilyn's home historically is really interesting. It's, I look back in the history with the historical society, it was the first club in town. It's got such an interesting history to it, but she's made it into a dollhouse. And, you know, I think with what she's done with Dave Olson, she should probably get a historic preservation award for how she's rebuilt it. And, uh, it's just a gorgeous dollhouse, you know? She did an amazing thing there. Uh, Mike Maraz, that I sold the mitten brewery company to, has given me the support for her to do the fence. She, on the north side of her property, between mitten and Maraz's property, there's a lot of public activity that, right there, you know, that goes on with selling beers and pizzas, and uh, I only think that just a little bit of an arch that's maybe six feet taller between them could help the privacy between that commercial building and Marilyn's building. And Mike is in support of this, the adjacent neighbor to the north. Uh, I think her property is just dollhouse cute, how she remodeled it and just made it gorgeous. I think the fencing that she's proposing that will match the gate archway to your entry is just matching around her property. There's fencing on every side to the mitten, and then to the neighboring property to the east, that is a commercial uh, B and B, you know, rental, and then you've got, uh, the neighbor to the south, and then you've got these properties near Wally's and, uh, that, that aren't so attractive. I think with her proposal, the property that she owns will just enhance her little dollhouse image of how she's reconstructed this property over the years. I think it's gonna look very nice. And I think those surrounding properties that are commercial wouldn't be opposed at all, because there are two fences on either side of all the posts. And they've already got their fences around, and I think it would really help her property look really nice, and I don't think any of the property owners around her would... Really nice, and I don't think any of the property owners around her would. Uh, be opposed to it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think we have moved into the public comments section. Um, Marilyn, are you satisfied with your your presentation?
Yeah. And you can see the horse encourages getting help brought up. Amazing, so I basically, when I got those pictures in the museum. I recreated the front porch to replicate what I've done with the lawn, the Georgian windows. I don't, do you know my property?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. So, uh, when you brought it up, I just. But I am, I I'm really trying to, I really tried to bring the property back to what it looked like back in eighteen ninety-six. For the changes that I've made and now I just wanna be able to finish that on. And my, as you can see, my view of my backyard is not very attractive. Because of everything that's going on, you know, refrigeration units and the all different sized fencing all around me and it really just kind of. You make a much nicer.
Yes.
And these things will never improve.
Yeah, that.
They just did it. They just did it.
And it also will help the noise because the refrigeration unit makes noise. And I think it might help when it kind of blocks some of the noise around me. The miss is pretty noisy because we're all outside eating and of course, next to me on the boardwalk, I know all of your. There's lots of people and lots of activity, Wally's and I tons of music and. So it wouldn't give me, it wouldn't be much more quiet also as well as just including, you know, because this is what I'm looking at.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, uh, continuing with public comments, um, do we have any supporting comments from the audience or online? Do we have any opposing comments from the audience or online?
None.
Any general comments, any letters? Or?
Yeah, no written correspondence, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, last chance for comments for anybody? Okay, we're gonna close the uh public comment section. And we're gonna go into commission deliberation and uh resolution here. Okay, just just general comments. Number one, I appreciate your presentation. It's clear, it's direct. We've got a very good idea of what it is you wanna do. Thank you very much. Jim, do you have general comments?
Um, it is certainly a unique situation, a unique property, which brings some challenges and that height is something to be thinking about for the other. Um, fences that are already there, so this is definitely a unique situation.
Give any general comments, Rich?
Uh, well, I'll echo the uh the uniqueness and, you know, the the presentation. I have been reviewing, I did go down there and and. I didn't go on the property, but I was able to kind of uh take a few pictures and I've kind of been looking at that and I'm and and I do see that. Uh, you know, I wanted to air out this uh. This fence with the structure, structural, uh, and the good side and the bad side. I wanna air that out because I try to be logical. But, you know, in in reviewing it all, I I don't think it's gonna make that much difference, particularly. As I review some of the pictures here of what's there already and also the, uh, as we say, the the commercial. And the kind of the unique nature and and somewhat unsightly nature of the adjoining properties that. Uh, I I just don't think it's gonna matter that much in terms of the, you know, if she, especially, you know, because she's attempting to. To use this property as a nice residential use uh as as opposed to commercial that, uh, you know, I don't have any any problem in. In in seeing this this fencing there and and uh so that's general.
Okay, this is, to me, this is one of those homes that helps to establish the character of this town. Where you've got a historic home with mixed in with commercial activities all at once, and that's. It's a part of the character of this town. That's what makes this a special town. So with that as the background, um, what I'd ask is that we go through the four standards. And uh, review each of those with respect to this application. And this application is for three twenty-one Water Street. Uh, we have the property ID as oh, three, five, seven, three hundred, one, oh, two, oh, oh. Um, so let's, could we please go through the first one, Jim? Would you like to do that one?
Sure, the strict compliance within area setbacks, frontage height, bulk or density would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. Given that there's commercial businesses located around each side of the subject's lot and higher fencing already exists. Among the fencing abutting the properties, it does appear as if. A conforming fence could be built, but we could consider conforming unnecessarily burdensome based on the conditions of the adjacent use. And structures around the property line.
Rich, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no.
And Jim, do you feel the standard is met, is satisfied?
I do.
Rich, do you satisfy?
It it, I feel the standard is satisfied, met.
I also feel the standard is satisfied. Okay, number two, would you do that, please, Rich?
The variance would do substantial justice to the owner as well as to other property owners in the district. Or whether a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief and more be more consistent with justice to others. I'm I'm reading some additional things here. Should I read this into the as well? I I didn't.
Sure, if you like, it's up to you.
Commissioner Balk wanted to make it clear that they are referring to a ten. Oh, wait a minute, this is the wrong thing here. That was last week, that's the last week's, last month. I got the wrong thing here. Something wasn't adding up there.
Here, it's this one, right there, okay.
This one, okay. Uh, the. Findings would be the request is not extreme, it's only ten inches. And it's only enough to provide reasonable visual relief of the view of nearby businesses, structure and higher fences. As such, a variance may give substantial relief to the applicant and allow for justice for neighboring property owners. Commercial businesses subject to site plan review may be approved to include fences higher than six foot. So it is not uncommon to find higher fences in the downtown area now or in the future. A le- lesser relaxation would defeat the purpose and need for the higher visual screening. The uh, so the, I believe that the uh, that the condition for the variance is met.
For standard number two.
For standard number two, Jim?
I would agree, the standard's met.
And I also agree that that standard is satisfied. I'll do number three, that the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances of the property and not to general neighborhood conditions. Uh, this site is unique based on its location in a commercial mixed-use zoning district. Commercial uses on each side and nonconforming fencing abutting the property lines uh makes this a unique. Property and unique circumstances. Um, and I feel that that satisfies standard number three, the plight of the owner is due to the unique circumstances of the property. Jim, do you?
I would agree that.
Rich?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, Jim, would you do number four, please?
Last one is that the problem is not self-created or based on fine personal financial circumstances. This is certainly not uh self-created by all. Uh, while the higher fence is desirable from a personal perspective of the applicant. They did not create the circumstances and characteristics of the abutting land use and structures. Additionally, the variance request has no relationship to the project cost. So with that, I would say the standard is also met.
Rich?
Yes, I agree the standard is met.
And I agree the standard is met, so we've we've uh. Said, we've demonstrated that all four standards have been satisfied in this case. Um, do we have a a motion?
Uh, yes, I would move to approve a variance to increase the allowable fence height to six feet and ten inches. Instead of the maximum six-foot fence height, an increase of ten inches. Based on the positive findings documented in the staff memo provided to the ZBA for its August ten, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I'm excited.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we need to state about the contingent approval or is that just part of the record normally? The approval is, well, I'll just read it, the the this approval is contingent upon the construction of the fence. Being in substantial conformance with the location, design and height as proposed and included in the ZBA variance applicant materials.
We need, we need a motion to amend the motion. Cause we we passed a motion that didn't have.
Well, definitely, correct.
Yeah, so I mean, you've already passed the motion, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So then I think.
Okay. In case you don't know, Mr. Whitty is one of the city attorneys. Okay, so we have approved your request for a variance. Oh, and thank you for a very nice presentation.
Yes, and a beautiful.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
I'm sorry it was so confusing, but we had to make sure the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed. Okay.
Bye now. Have a great rest, Merry summer.
Thank you.
Okay.
That concludes the new business. Do we have any communications?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
Okay, ZBA member comments, Rich?
No, I have no comment.
And I have no comments other than to thank everyone for coming to tonight's meeting and uh the preparation that goes into it. Do we have any public comments in the audience or online?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Su- support. Uh, all in favor? I, I. Meeting adjourned.